Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the lead planning board. On April 11th, 2022. It's 6:05 PM. I'm Peter Blum, Acting Chair and Vice Chair of the Board. Present are Board Members Dave Forrest, Matt Carlino. Also present is Beth Mead. You are our Land Use Assistant, I believe, Beth, if I've got your title right. Also present is Jeremiah Pollard, Town Attorney. And Gordon Bailey, who is the alternate member of the Board. Also present is our show, who is a Lee Selectman and Kathy Hall, who is a Lee Resident. Have I missed anyone? Anybody want to speak up? Okay, the first item on the agenda after the call to order is a continuation of the public hearing on the zoning bylaw amendment that we had under consideration at the last meeting. That bylaw amendment would revise the town sign bylaws with regard to political signs or public interest signs. And I think at the last meeting, although we haven't yet seen the minutes for it, my recollection is that the Board decided to go forward with the basic draft that we had before us at the time and request some additional changes. And I have, as I've been volunteered myself to draft the document with those changes. And I circulated them, I think, two or three days after the last meeting. Is have the members received? Oh, here's here's Buck. Okay. Have the members received that draft? I'm going to turn it over to you in a minute, Buck, as soon as you get going here.
Yeah, I mean, I have to use my phone.
We're, we're in the reconstituted public hearing for the signed bylaw, Buck. Yeah, and I was just going over the history of the proposals. Peg Byron has now joined us, another member of the Board, so we're at full complement here. And I think my introduction is essentially complete, Buck, so I'll turn the gavel over to you.
Okay, as I did catch from you, we, there was a few changes that we did want to initiate. And you want me to go through? Yeah, why don't you go through what what you amended, Peter?
Okay.
That might be best.
Okay, I'm gonna share screen.
Please. Like, yeah, like I said, I'm on my phone tonight. I don't know what happened, but uh, so I'm gonna be a little limited.
Okay. Well, let me know if I can help with, you know.
If you share a screen, that'd be great.
All right, so this one. I, because we're facing a possible challenge on constitutionality. I took a stab at making some findings and explanation. Jeremiah, I'd welcome your thoughts on this. My idea is that if we should be at any time challenged in court by an enacted bylaws of this kind. We would be at an advantage if we had made an explanation and legislative findings that explain to the court in in terms that we've controlled what our intent was and and the factual basis upon which we rely. So I put a couple of things in here, I guess. I would suggest that the Board and Jeremiah discuss whether this is kind of thing is a good idea in general, and if it is, whether these are the right kinds of findings, or whether there are other findings that we ought to suggest. Can we stop here and turn it back to you, Buck, to moderate? Or should I just call on people or recognize people? I can't hear you, Buck.
There we go. Yes, if you or Beth could moderate right now.
Okay, so Jeremiah, if you don't mind me calling on you, does it make sense to have something like this as a statement of purpose of this amendment? And secondly, if if it does, does it make sense to have this one or a different one? You're muted, sir.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that there's any problem with the purpose. There's any problem with the definitions. I would, I would ask that, you know, I think that we should. It's probably a little persnickety, but for the definitions. Where you say a sign placed on private property designed to influence voters or influence any official action by one or more public officials or expressing an opinion on a matter of cultural society, societal, religious, I'd like and/or before the political topic.
Oh, okay. How about just or?
That's fine, too.
Yeah, that's, I think that that is lacking, some sort of a, whatever that thing is a pre.
Connector, yeah, proposition, so, so just or is fine. And then obviously that that repeats itself below at 23.
Right, good catch, thank you.
Then. You know, from there, I mean, I'm not going to repeat that. I think you've done a good job of consolidating what the comments were. The only, the only thing that we've already gone over it is, you know, the issue about a permit and where that stands. There's some local authority that can be troubled with that, but we've gone over that. You've done a good job of assembling the higher court cases that suggest that as long as something's uniform, they should be okay. And the unfortunate thing is that some of the local authority is just it's tougher on political science and would, there's some authority locally not never been up to the First Circuit, never been up to the US Supreme Court that says you can't require permitting, but we've had that discussion, so I don't think we should have it again.
So the theory, Jeremiah, is that if it's has political content on it, that under no circumstances could the town ever require a permit to?
Yeah, and ACLU may take that position. I don't, the the cases that you you had cited in in the introduction to the last meeting are do not say that, and some of the concurring opinions go out of their way to express the fact that these bylaws exist across all of the country. So, you know, they, and they do sometimes require a permit.
Go ahead, please finish.
Yeah, we have some local authority here, and it wasn't the Holyoke case, I misspoke last time. It's Flaherty v. NAPAC, and it's 999 F sup second 323, and that's the 2014 case that I talked about, I was telling Gordon about the last time. Where, which was, you know, the circumstances were terrible in that case because the mayor ordered all the signs are moved off the public median. And it was, you know, a political opponent, so it's like the circumstances were, but bad, bad facts make bad case law, as they say, and you know, it's not, it's a local case, so it's it's something to think about, but.
Sounds like that was a federal court decision.
It is a federal court decision.
Yeah, under the US Constitution.
So it was, it was Judge Ponter.
Yeah. Well, it's troubling. Okay, any other comment on, up to this point, Jeremiah has covered the interdefinitions? Any, anybody else want to make any comments about that?
I was wondering, right in the the purpose, actually, you have the 10 feet setback on everything?
Yeah. I put that in because we talked about it last time. And I thought it was pretty important to explain why we weren't allowing these permits less political signs to be as large as some other signs. I thought we relied explicitly on the idea of traffic hazards. Yeah. Being the reason that we didn't want them large.
Right, we were gonna do, I thought, the sidewalk or curb.
Yeah, that's, that's later in in the draft, in the policy itself. This is just an explanation of why we came to the policy. This.
So is that, that setback is not 10 feet is not a policy?
Not for political signs, as I read it, it's.
No, but it is for for other signs.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
So, so what, so what Peter put in here is that they should be of limited size that is unlikely to obstruct the view of motorists entering the roadway or be unduly distracting the passing motors, which is the public health and safety concern that we.
All right, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's, that's fine. Okay, I'm gonna keep going then, pass the definitions. And into the general standards, and I think, I don't think there's anything new here. There may be some new wording. This is the key phrase here, the owner of any lot may place political signs on that lot with a permit on the same terms as a permanent business or home occupation sign in that zone. And without regard, oh, I did add this, and without regard to whether a business or home occupation is present, so if a person wants to put up a political sign on a residential lot at the size equal to what they would be entitled to if they had a home occupation, and they can get the permit for that political sign and put it up, and it can be of equal size to what they would have had if they had a home occupation. Is that clear? Does that, does that get the idea across? Nobody's complaining, okay. All right, so then the rest of this, I think, is pretty much the same. Additionally, no permit signs are allowed, and here's where six square feet is is still the way we want it, I think. And adjacent to a road, and they also be placed on town land adjacent to a roadway and on the owner's side of any roadway edge, curb, or sidewalk, provided that they do not create a traffic hazard. And now, and here's something I want to talk, you want to give you guys a chance to talk about. And also, in any land designated by the select board is a free speech signage area. So I, I don't know if the selectmen want to accept such invitation or even be subject to pressure that they would make such a designation, but it seemed to me that we could show our, you know, a higher level of friendliness to free speech if the town had an area where, in addition to political signs placed on private lots, we had a kind of a free speech signage area. Did I mention this last time? I think I did. Anyway, what do you all think of that? Is that something you wanted here or not?
Jeremiah speaking, I, I, I don't want it in there.
No.
Okay, I, I want you to, I want you to stop at traffic hazard. Because you, you know, you, you have, you have a board of select, you know, select board now that might do that. You might have a select board that won't do it in future years, so.
So why would that be a problem?
Because the, again, there's the, there's some authority, it's not appellate authority that suggests that you may, and which is why the ACLU and its edits put that you can put it on public property. There's some authority suggesting that you can put signs on public property. It's gonna be, it's, it's, it's not something that is, is, you know, readily known and could be a disaster once people start, like, and it happened in one of recently, just people started sticking signs in the, in the dirt by the trees on the, on the Main Street, looked ridiculous, and I, I would hope that if appellate court took that up, they would, they wouldn't find that the town has to let people put signs on public property because the public property is managed by the select board unless it's designated to another board's jurisdiction. And, you know, if if it just becomes a free for all, it'd be ridiculous.
Okay, thank you, Jeremiah Gordon.
Thank you. As always, I'm opposed to any language saying that they may be placed on town land. I don't care if you want to say they can be put on the owner's land adjacent to roadways and on the owner's side of any sidewalk, whatever. But it's up to the, I mean, Jeremiah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think only that the Board of Selectmen can give people permission to do anything on town land. Unless it's a park, certain wreck, you know, kind of thing that's been given to them, but I, I think that's problematic. It's for the same reason that Jeremiah is talking about. What's the difference between the the select board designating town property as a free speech area or just people having the right to do it because you said they could put it on town and land? That just really bothers me, and as an enforcement person, I'd have a problem with that. As a select board member, I'd have a problem with that.
Right, so I, I'm not sure if I understand, Gord, because put yourself in your select board seat that you maybe regain. And somebody comes to you and says, I have, you know, there's this part, there's this, I have this little triangle out here outside my, my driveway where there's a pole and roadway all around, it's, you know, 10 feet by 10 feet by 10 foot triangle aside, and I would like to request that this be designated for free speech for anybody who wants to put signs there. And I would go to the selectmen and I would say, please designate this, and the selectmen would, under this, have the power to say yes or no. And if it were you, maybe you'd be inclined to say no, just as a matter of principle, but somebody else might say yes, but I just don't see how that leads the selectmen yet into any.
Well, I think perhaps some of the Jeremiah mentioned earlier with different boards and their mentalities. I, I don't think anybody wants to set a precedent like that, and I don't want to see any slight word, whether I'm on it or not, pressured into having making this kind of decision. I, I just don't think it's the right way to go. I think it's a decision pressure pressured on on the board that they don't need. But I'm talking about your second and third line down. Where it says may also be placed on town land. I, I cut that out. I mean, you want to do the six square feet, you know, on the owner, because I'm assuming we're talking about the owner's land, so. And I'm not talking about getting surveys and all that crap right now. I'm just saying that.
Yes, you are.
Anybody, no, no, I'm not going there yet. What I'm saying is, I don't think we should blanketly try and usurp the select board's rights to allow things on town land. That would have to go through them. Somebody could do that maybe with a temporary permit sign, a sign permit, but I, I'm opposed to putting it in a general blanket statement that let anybody put something in front of their house, and it's on town land. I, I have a problem with that.
All right, thank you. Buck, you had your hand up next.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it would be a can of worms with that. If they want to sign on public land, they can then get a temporary sign, and I, I agree. If you I think even pull out that on town land in section two there, and just say adjacent to a roadway, roadway on the owner's side of the roadway. You know, take that town land vagueness out of there.
Okay.
It would be my, it would be my thought.
Okay, you guys are both wanting to talk about two things at once, and I, I don't know, I can make changes, but I want to give everybody a chance to speak before I make any change, so. Matt?
Thank you. Yeah, I actually agree with the taken out may also be placed on town land adjacent to roadway. I like it maybe for different reasons, but just to not create confusion in people's mind, we're going to allow it up to the sidewalk on the owner's side, and I just want to make it simple, and so.
That's town land, that could be.
I know, I know, I know, I know it is, but I feel like if we say town land, then, then I feel like, would they, not that we have many streets like this or sidewalks, but then I feel like they could put it on the other side, it just might create confusion. I like it as simple as possible, but I agree with you, Peter. You're just confirming that that right away or easement is town land. I, I understand that, but I, I don't think it's needed to be said.
Okay, all right. Before I do any changes, I want to make sure I get all, everybody a chance to speak, so Jeremiah.
Okay, I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
Instead of saying that last sentence, which is, and also on any town owned and designated by the select board as a free speech signage area. I would just say, and also on any land with permission of the owner, period. That can be town land, that can be anyone's land.
So.
I, I don't, I do not have a problem. I do not have a problem with the town land adjacent to a roadway on the owner's side, because we talked about that, and I thought that's where the consensus was. But if you, if, if, if this is something that people feel is something that the select board should deal with or designate it, they can approach them. But not only the select board, anyone's property that you have permission to put one of these signs on.
Okay, thank you, Peg.
Yes, can you hear me, Peter?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Everybody, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, I think if someone has property and they wish to put up a sign. Now, we're talking about political signs here, just to be clear.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes, little, little political signs under two.
Okay, then I certainly think they have a right to do that and should be allowed to do so.
Okay, so are you supporting two or supporting Jeremiah's change or what?
Well, I like Jeremiah's change, but I also feel that if people own property, there's even some property right now in this town where people have political signs. They don't live nearby the signs, but it is their property. And I feel they have a right to do that.
Okay, thank you, Peg. Jeremiah.
You're welcome.
Again, Jeremiah, you still got your hand up? Do you want to say more?
Oh, no, I I guess I just had to figure out how to put my hand down, I guess.
Okay, listen, I, what I want to do is I want to try to fix this so that it's everybody, everybody likes it. If I take out, there are two things that we had, and I, I think I fixed one of them. The thing about the free speech area is gone, and I've used Jeremiah's language here. You should see that in front of you. And then this, this all such as thing in the middle about town land. If I take out the word town, does that solve it?
Matt? I think, I think that would, that would be fine like that. I, I think it'd be okay.
So is this, whoops, sorry.
Yes, the change looks good to me. I am in agreement.
All right, everybody, Peg, you okay with this as it reads now?
In addition to signs, are we talking about the?
Number two.
Signs.
See, in addition to signs authorized above, which would be in one, those are the signs that you would get a permit for just as though they were business signs.
Political signs?
Political signs under one, you can put up any size that's allowed in your zone if you get a permit. Under two, you can put up signs without a permit, but up to a limited size. A limited uniform size.
Well, I guess I'll be the only one, but I'm not in favor of making anybody get a permit for a political.
They're not going to, Peg.
Okay, what are they gonna do? Okay.
Make them, it doesn't make them get a permit. It says that if you want a big sign, the size of a business sign, then you, you must get a permit, but you can put any number of six square foot signs in your yard without a permit. Are you saying you don't like that arrangement?
Actually, I don't, and I may be the only one here that feels that way, but that is how I feel.
So Peg, are you saying you would like it to just allow people to have any size political sign at any time without any permit?
Yes.
In any location? Up on the roof, up on the roof of their house? Lighted, unlighted?
I, I can't help it, that's just how I feel, I feel.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to check, okay.
No, that's fine, Peter, and I thank you for everything you've done, and I know what you're trying to do here. You're doing a great job, but in my heart of hearts, I can't go for it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Matt, do you want to say something?
Do we, should we, and I might have asked this last meeting, but should we do we need to say signs are not allowed on the roadside of a sidewalk?
It already says that.
It doesn't.
It says, yeah, he has it in there that you, you can't erect it in a way so that it would be unduly distracting to passing motorists.
Well, I guess my question is, is that clear enough for sure? Does that leave, leave a gray area?
They should be of a limited size that is unlikely to obstruct the view of motorists entering. I mean, maybe you can, to add to that, they should be of limited size and placed, this is in the beginning, in place such that it is unlikely. So to be specific, maybe we should add those words. So that's 7.1 subsection B2.
7.1 subsection. What page are you on, Jeremiah?
I'm in your purpose, seven sections.
Back on page one, okay.
So, so one, section sub 7.1 subsection B2. Since political signs may be now placed without a permit closer to the traveled way. Well, I mean, close, I just say close because nobody knows what the prior bylaw was, close to the traveled way. So take out the R. They, it's not.
I got it, it's gone.
They should be of limited size and placed is going to be what you add. And play.
All right, just to clarify, we don't, it would be too much to say something to the fact that signs are not allowed on the roadside of the sidewalk.
Okay, so Jeremiah was jumping back to the purpose statement.
Yeah.
And I think your question is about page three, right?
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm okay, by the way, I'm okay with whatever the consensus is. I just brought it up for conversation purposes. Do we need to, should we, should we put that in there to be really black and white?
He has, he also has what she's going to now with some, some setback restrictions.
So let's read, let's read this thing on page three, okay? In addition to the signs authorized above, political signs are also allowed without a sign permit on private land of the sign owner. I could, actually, I could move up that Jeremiah amendment up right up here and on land with permission of any, so, anyway. Let's keep going. Such signs will not exceed six square feet and may also be placed on land adjacent to a roadway and on the owner's.
Should we say shall?
May also.
Should we say shall?
It, it really doesn't matter. I mean, if our bylaw doesn't allow you to do it, you can't do it.
Shall what, Matt? Shall, shall?
Shall be, take out may also. I don't know, you know, should just say shall be placed on land adjacent to, I, I'm just trying to clarify so everyone knows where to put their signs. I might be being too picky about it, but.
No, you, you don't want to say shall there. That's not what you mean. That's not what it means. Okay. You can put a quote, you can put it closer to your house, or you could, that's, that's, that's the limit, so may is the right word.
Okay.
We just, we said in the first sentence, you can put it on your own land.
Yeah.
Now we're saying that without regard to whether it's your land or not, if it's on your side of the sidewalk, it's okay.
Okay.
And without, so we don't have to get any surveyors out there, look for the boundaries or anything. Does, does the wording work for you, Matt?
Yeah, no, I, I'm fine. I was just, I just wanted, I could see people putting, again, not that we have many roads, probably just a handful, where we have a sidewalk and then grass and then the road. I just want to be clear so people don't put signs on, you know, beyond the sidewalk, that's all, and if you guys, if the consensus is that this does it, then I'm good with it.
All right, thanks. All right, Dave.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna offer is, is I'm in agreement with remove striking the not having on town property, but put maybe part of the next sentence, you ever make it as an on the owner's side of the sidewalk. And we're not, we're not going to. On the owner's side of the sidewalk, and we're not, we're not going to. You know, and I kind of go make sure that uh, the town owns twelve feet or fifteen feet off the road. But as long as they stay on the owner's side of the sidewalk, that should take care of all of our problems.
So I could delete that highlighted language Dave, you see what I marked there?
Yeah.
I could delete that and it would say may be placed on the owner's side of any roadway edge. Curver sidewalk. Is that better if I delete that stuff in gray?
Yes.
I think that makes it, I think that makes it simplified for people.
Okay.
Dave's suggestion.
All right. All right, are you ready to go on?
Um, before we go too far, I think that free speech. Hmm, we need to get rid of somewhere else too, or want to do that when we get to it.
What do you mean?
It's in um, E four. Or. Let's see, seven, six, E four, or we'll, when we see it, we'll, we'll do it.
Go back or forward?
Forward.
Oh.
While we're on this topic.
Oh, I see, okay, well, where is, where is it, is it, all right.
He, keep on going.
Okay, I see, we're, we're at the bottom of page four now.
Yep, yep, right there.
Oh, okay, this is the, this is the emergency removal provision. And I think Buck is saying, let's make this parallel to the changes we just made.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
This says, this allows building commissioner to remove any sign without notice. It is on town owned land. But not, but excluding any political sign. That is placed adjacent to the sign owner's real property. And in accordance with the subchapter on the owner's side of any curb or sidewalk maintained by the town. And we should all, we should definitely delete this last thing because we've deleted the. Area idea.
I think, I think this one sound, I think this one's good.
I think it's okay the way it is Buck, but tell me, tell me what change.
Oh, that looks good, no, just that, that was it.
Oh, okay.
To get it in harmony, yeah.
I'm gonna go back then to page.
Yep.
Page C, and we're gonna look at three and four. In addition to signs authorized above, political signs are also allowed without a sign permit in building windows. But they shall not be separately illuminated. From the exterior flashing, ACU comment on this was, we needed to make sure that we didn't try to prohibit interior lighting, which. They assert we have no right, no authority to regulate, so I didn't want to argue about it, I think they probably are right. So it's illuminated from the exterior or flashing, which we prohibit generally. Anybody have any comment? Four, if not, four is. The same which is before. Um, and then the last sentence says that if you, if you want to use the paragraph one. Political sign, that uses up your allowance for, for square footage. So you can't have, you know, if you're in a zone that allows twenty square foot business sign. You can't have twenty square feet of business sign and twenty square feet of free speech signs, you gotta have twenty. Square feet in total of the both, Peg.
Um, what if you own a building and um, you want to put a huge sign on your building and you're. Say a landlord, are you allowed to do that?
If you have a business, you get a permit for a business sign and.
What if you don't have a business?
Why would you want a sign?
Well, I'm just asking, I'm asking the question.
Well, the business is to rent property, right? If you, if you want to put up apartments for rent sign, is that your hypothetical?
No, if you have a, a, a building and you want to put up a sign. On your building and you own the building, are you allowed to do that? If you are the landlord, if you're a landlord.
If you own it, um, how, how this is written, correct me if I'm wrong Peter, but you can put as many. Six square foot signs up as you want, all over the property. Or if you want, if you want a bigger sign, you can follow the zoning sign by law. To that measurement.
What if you wanted to put up a twelve foot sign? I'm just asking these questions.
If it's allowed in, in that zone, sure.
So if you wanted.
You're saying, you're saying that if you own a, I, I just want to get this clear because I. Find political signs very, very. Um, interesting, uh, if you own a building and you want to paint the side of your house. Or put up a sign. Um, on your building. You are only allowed to do that. In the zone you're in regarding the size of the sign.
No, you can put up, you can put up as many six foot square signs as you want, as many as you want.
What if you wanted to put up a twelve foot sign on the side of your building, say you wanted to light up your building? And say, whatever, because I have seen some buildings even in this town. Um, that have been put lights on the side of the building or. A barn possibly, they put something on the side of the barn. Um, that was not in character with the s- size of the sign. In that neighborhood, are you allowed to do that?
I think the answer is no Peg, I think under the current bylaw, the answer is no. The, wh- when we, the thing that we do most on this planning board, as you know, is review sign applications. And those sign applications are for signs on buildings by and large. Where people seek to have per- permission to put a business sign on their building and advertise their business.
I understand that, but it's.
That's what it sounds like your question is, is.
Now, my question is about political signs, political.
Okay, so, under, under this proposal. But not under current bylaw, a person who wants to put up a political sign of the same size. As would be allowed for a business sign, may put up that political sign. But subject to one, requiring advanced permission, just like they would if it was a business sign and two. Being subject to the limits on location and size that are applied to business signs.
So therefore, I guess if you own the building in a particular area. And you wanted to light up the side of your house. Or put a sign on the side of your house, you would have to comply with what is in the zone. For this, in regard to a political sign, I'm not talking about a business sign.
The answer to your question, I think, is today you couldn't do it, under this bylaw you could, but you'd need a permit.
Okay, thank you.
And if you're getting at Wonder Woman Rosie, I don't think that would classify under any of this. You know, that's.
So what would it, that, yes, I, I, I kind of feel. Yes, I do Buck, and I appreciate you brought that up because I have a problem.
It's not a cultural, societal, religious or political topic. It's just how he painted his house. You know?
Taste is in the eye of the beholder.
I don't, I don't know that we need to resolve tonight what the category is of that particular installation. I think the fact that the town has avoided enforcing it for a long time. Speaks well for the town and I'm not sure we would want to. Find out what the rules are on that, I don't know, Jeremiah, do you have any advice?
Nope.
Well, that's my, that's my question because I have seen um. Various things that personally, um, I might not do on my own property, but. Other people do have a right to. I mean, I have friends that put up signs that I might not put up, but I defend that right because I feel. It is their right and um.
Well, I, I think I can, I can address some of that, but I'm never, we're never gonna get all of it. Peg is like, if you uh, interlock your shingles, so they say, you know, save the Ukraine, or you paint it on the side of your house, house. I don't know, I don't even know if those are signs.
Well, how about, if I might just ask this now.
I think, what the bylaw is, is addressing is, as I understand it, and it's, it's, you know, it's. It's touchy, there's a lot of landmines, is setting up. A sign that you're putting on your property, whether you fix it to your home, whether you put it. On free standing stanchions of whatever you're putting it on. And there are certain things that we can regulate. And so if someone's gonna put a twelve by twelve foot sign. Uh, I'm not ready, is town council will tell the board, you can't do some kind of regulation of that because how is it gonna be fixed? What's gonna happen when the winds that we've just had come through here, uh, pick it up and rip it off? The house if it's not pegged down properly, those type of things, uh. The, the whole thing about what you paint on your fences and what you paint on your siding is a whole different subject.
Okay, could I ask, seeing we're talking about this, um. If someone wanted to put up, I, I feel I have to ask this because I feel it's important to me personally. If someone wanted to put up a huge Ukrainian flag, would they be allowed to?
Not a sign.
I'm just curious, how would that work?
Not a sign.
They put it up and that's the end of the story.
It's a flag.
Pardon me?
It's a flag, it's not a sign.
They run up the flag and that's the end of story. The town is not involved.
Okay, so you could do that, if it was a twelve foot Ukrainian flag, I'm just asking.
But Peg, I'm not sure that we can answer every possible hypothetical here tonight about what, what might or might not be a sign. I just, you know, we're trying to help you with this, but I'm not sure that we can always answer every hypothetical possibility.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess what, what Peg is getting at, which is a good question is. Uh, is, wha- what, what are we doing here and are we suppressing unintentionally? Political expression, but what we have to keep in mind with, and it's, this is a hard task. Is we, we have a sign by law, obviously, we have to treat political speech in a certain way. But not every form of political speech, whether it's raising a flag. Um, or what have you, whatever it is, is a sign. Not all of it's gonna be, uh, uh, if we, and I think we, I think the definition in. Our, a proposed amendment is, is okay in that regard. Um, and is specific, but that, that, not everything that's done is a sign, just because. There's a physical component or whatever, that's, I guess that's my point.
Okay. Peg, you.
Thank you, thank you for. Sorry, I was just gonna say, thank you for trying to. Answer my questions and cope with issues that possibly could occur, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna keep going folks, if, if you're ready.
Please.
The next Roman numeral five is signs in residential zones. And uh, this is the. Uh, provision down here, I'm gonna scroll, I'm gonna push it up a little bit. This is the provision that says that. Home occupations can have little tiny six square feet signs. And I think we decided last time that we wanted to allow twelve square feet signs. Consistent with construction sign size, right? But then we reduce construction size to six, so I'm not sure if I've got an inconsistency in here. We want to allow twelve square foot home occupation and. Um, signs with a permit in, in the residential zones, Matt, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I think um. The construction signs where I think Gordon gave us a little history on that, um. That was for when uh, they were doing a big project and uh, they were allowed a kind of. A big advertising twelve uh, twelve square foot. Uh, sign for just like the um, advertising of the new project or open house or new announcement of the project.
Right.
I don't think we have a, uh, allow a home business for twelve square feet now, do we? Am I wrong on that?
No, it's six.
Six, so, so I was, I'd like to keep it at six and um. I'd almost like the construction signs to even be under the, the temporary signs if that's possible. I don't even want to, I don't even want to put that in there.
Okay, so, so Matt, I think what I'm hearing you say is. All of five should come out because the only thing it's doing is enlarging the size allowable for home occupation signs. Did I get that right?
Yeah, as long as, I mean, I don't, I don't, if someone can clarify, if we allow. Uh, twelve square feet now for a home occupation sign, if we do, then maybe we should keep that, but I don't, I didn't think we did.
No, it's six, I think, Gordon. Why don't you speak Gordon?
Uh, shoot, sorry, just a minute. My daughter's trying to FaceTime me, sorry. Let me go over here, sorry. Okay, I guess I'm unmuted, um, yeah, I, I think right now you'll find that home occupation signs are six square feet, but. Uh, in a way, I, I know I'm not big on signs and, and cluttering up our environment with signs, but. I think going to twelve square feet for home occupations actually is not a bad idea, I don't think it's oversized in R twenty, R thirty and. By the way, get rid of the R, the forty, right, we're just going with RA now.
Okay.
CR and RM zones, I, I don't think that that's a problem.
Um, Gordon, should RB be in there as well?
Well, that's, you know, be careful, RB actually stands for rural business, not residential business. So, um, that's gonna be coming up in one of your next items of, of, uh, that's gonna be on your table for tonight's agenda. Which I was gonna speak to at that time. So I, I'm not sure, because it's rural business, I think that it's more inclined, I would be more inclined to let them have the larger size as a business. Um, there aren't that many artisan home occupations type. Um, places in the town of Lee that would probably take advantage of the twelve square foot sign, that's only three foot by four foot. And as long as they stay with the setbacks and all, I, I don't see that it's obnoxious or, or interferes with anybody's line of sight. Or is, is cluttery, so I, I've always thought six square feet actually was a little bit small for a home occupation. Um, in, in the R zones, residential zones. That, that's all, and, and I will talk to the construction sign issue if you want, or I can wait till we're done.
Why don't you, because, because we're talking six and twelve in both cases.
Sure, um, and again, um, i- i- the whole purpose again originally for the construction sign section. Where we're allowing a larger square footage was for those major projects like as, as um, we mentioned last meeting, like the Eagle Mill. Things where you have, you know, maybe uh, the Commonwealth gives you money. And the architect, landscape architect, engineer, contractor, you can't put all that on six square foot sign. Because it ain't gonna happen, so I actually thought it was larger than twelve square feet, but twelve. In my mind, for that kind of thing on major projects. Is even too small, I think the Commonwealth uses four by eight sheets to do that, I mean, huge things. But they like to pat themselves on the back and say they're spending your money. Um, so I think keeping twelve, twelve square feet on construction sign is not un, un. Um, unrealistic, and that doesn't mean that. Somebody who has a roofing business will stick a twelve square foot sign every place they do the roof, that's not the kind of issue we're talking about, maybe there's a way to twenty eight that. Because they generally fall within the smaller six square foot sign, you know? Um.
But Gordon, the, the reason that we did this was not that we think that the construction signs are too big, but that the ACLU points out. That they're, the stuff they like can only be six square feet, but construction companies get twelve square feet, that's content regulation. And it's challengeable.
Well, I, I understand, um, you know, the other thing is, you know, make it, make the construction sign be as large as whatever that is allowed in that zone for. um, so in the R, well, you don't really have big commercial jobs, but if you do in the DCBC, it can be as big as whatever the DCBC allows. Keep it zone required, instead of minimizing square feet across the board, they can't complain about that, that, that stays with the same issue of getting a permit for the, you know, a huge sign on your building for political signs, you know, whatever anybody else can have, you can have. Um, so keep it by zone instead of regulating it by square feet.
So your, your idea would be that if you have a building sign, if, if Starbucks has a building sign and a freestanding sign, but they hire Jones Construction, then Jones Construction can get a third sign of whatever size is allowed in that, in that zone?
No, i- the issue is, if you look at the language on E, it's when you're going to name off, all identify all the players, not just a single contractor. Um, and maybe there's no way to differentiate in the bylaw to get that specific, but in general, that was, again, this was in the late eighties, early nineties, we came up with this, and at the time, it wasn't a problem, and everybody's followed it pretty well. Um, so I don't know, I'm just throwing out, that's what we did, you know, I don't have any answer.
Let's hear from others, Matt.
I, I think I'd like the construction, maybe we have to rewrite it, or I, I guess I'd be okay with the twelve square feet, but I don't want it to be without a permit, I want something to, uh, maybe they have to come into the planning board for a signed permit for that project, so we can make sure um, we've got, uh, the terms covered. Maybe we just do it li- that way.
Be us anymore, we just handed that off to the building commissioner.
Well, that's what I mean, yeah, yeah. Followed in the normal sign procedure under normal zoning bylaws. And if there's a, if there's a project that they wanna list all the contractors and the team that work together, then we can approve it for that duration of the project.
Is that, that will do it, maybe? And then leave twelve square feet alone. Buck, you wanna say something? Go ahead. Buck?
Yep, uh, so disagree, Matt, um, so say you're doing a driveway, um, dresser hole, or, or whatever, they would have to come in every time to get a permit, that, that seems a little excessive. And I don't think we're dead in the water with six or twelve, because, say you're doing a big project, how this, how E, the first part of E, how I read it, each company is its own construction, cuz it says and/or um, contractor, architect, landscape, architect, and/or engineer, name, address, and other pertinent information. The and/or gives them the ability, so each one of those businesses could have, you know, up to a six or twelve foot
Yeah.
on that project, so.
I think, I, I think Gordon's history, if, if Gordon's history is correct, he's saying this was intended for large projects, so that it could be almost a bigger billboard for everyone to name everyone involved on the project, so it'd be one sign for twelve feet, the, the, the company that, or twelve square feet, the company that would do the driveways, or what, they would have the six square feet signs, uh, and they would just be able to put those out.
No, they're not, not, no, cuz you're saying with a permit.
No, I'm sorry, I don't want this, I don't want the, um, I don't want the, the roofer, the painter, the, the contractor that's going in and doing maybe a, a, a project. They can put their normal six foot, I'd like it to be that they can put their normal six feet sign, signs out, I think this construction sign from Gordon's history was for a larger project, like say the Eagle Mill, where you put a sign out there and, and maybe twelve square feet's even too small for that, but I think that's what Gordon was saying, this was meant for, and all I'm saying is I'm fine with that, let's keep that intention, but let's have them come in so that we can make sure they're following what we want them to follow, whatever that may be. Because right now, it's, isn't it vague right now? Now you could have a bunch of contractors on, say, on, on the, um, uh, Starbucks, there could be a, a ton of twelve foot, square foot signs there.
Uh huh. Yep, and it would be, let's remember, it'd be temporary during construction.
Uh, Gordon?
Yes, thank you, um, so i- if you look at E and go to the second sentence, perhaps it could be modified to say, uh, instead of it shall identify, start off with saying the a single sign may identify the contractor, architect, landscape architect, um, or engineer, get rid of and, address and other pertinent information on one single sign up to twelve square feet, something like that, just take care of it all right there, now that, that's talking about one job identifier. And it's a may, and you started off by saying a single sign may, you know, identifying, you know, that may be in, uh, may be placed up to twelve square feet. Just thinking that might work.
Everybody okay with that? Should I type?
Can that be without a permit?
I, I would, I would, uh, the only reason I thought maybe, because this is a large job, not a not a re-roofing job, you know, this is a major job and it's probably gonna be there a while. I would think that you would want it with a permit, just so somebody can double check on the size and the setback locations. So I would probably say with a permit.
I, I mean, I don't know if we can identify, it's gonna be hard to dive, identify what a large project is, but.
Oh, I didn't say to put the word large in there.
No, I'm, I'm not saying you, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I think, I agree with Gordon, it should have a permit for the reasons mentioned, and um, I don't think a, a roofing job's gonna have a twelve square foot sign, they're gonna have their normal
Yeah.
stake in six foot sign.
Just like a real, like a real estate sign, or.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Sign, yeah.
Exactly.
So.
Twelve, should I leave the twelve alone?
Well, I think first, let's start with the first E. I think that'll take care of itself, we may not even need that. Uh, square footage mentioned being number one. If you go up to E, and the, the, what starts it shall identify, if, um, if, if you were to say a single sign.
I already did that up here. I already did that in the previous sentence.
Oh, you forgot sign.
Oh.
A single sign, okay, well then, I didn't see you put it in there, I apologize. Then a single sign, if you want, put it up there, wherever. So after the word construction, you wanna say a single sign, correct?
No, he's got it.
Single on premise construction.
Okay, yep, that's, that's what happens. With the lawyers versus the enforcement people, it's hard to, it's hard to follow the way you structure your sentence. So then instead of it, you could say, the sign may identify, instead of shall, the sign may identify.
I, I'm not sure I'm gonna agree with this personally, I, I um, I think, if we're gonna leave it twelve feet, which I think I wanna do, I think we need some basis to differentiate it from a First Amendment sign. And I think there's sufficient basis, at least, uh, the basis to pass left test at least.
So if you keep, keep.
What, let me finish, though. Okay. Just look at all the stuff we're requiring to be on here. We're not, this is a minimum size. There's a lot of stuff to put on this sign, and if you make it small, he can't read it. He can't find out who the architect is, yeah.
I, I'm in agreement with you.
All right, so what do you wanna change?
I, I'll, where you have your cursor, if you just say, you know, uh, the sign may and then leave the rest, identify the contractor, blah, 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 blah.
Okay, you just made what, you've just taken away my argument. Because you said it may identify, not, it, it no longer has to identify.
No, but it's also only one sign. We've said in the first, the way I wanted to say it was, it was only one sign.
Okay.
It's gonna be allowed, that could identify all those things, cuz what if they, what if, uh, you know, somebody, they don't have a landscape architect, are they in violation if it says they shall name one?
Well, I was thinking, I was thinking the same thing. Let them, let them, let them put a list of, the list out of this, or whoever they want on there, but it doesn't have to be what the list we present to them.
So if you keep it it shall identify, but not be limited to, I, I don't know, I it's just, you wanna get down to the fact that it's one sign, and it can list all these people if you want, and according to your step number one, it can be up to twelve square feet.
I like that.
That's what we've got, Peg?
Oh, thank you, um, I was gonna say, I like that, um, I think in, in years past, um, when we had the, uh, school of renovation, um, we did have a huge sign, I don't know what the size was, but it identified a number of people, and, um, people saw it, and it was a good thing, I'm not opposed to that at all, and how you word it, I think you guys are probably better at that than I am, but I'm not opposed to it in any way.
That won't be allowed now.
Pardon me?
That will not be allowed now. That sign.
Why?
Cause we're limiting, we're limiting it to twelve square feet.
Oh.
How was it allowed before?
They just did it.
Well, it may have been, it may have been considered a municipal sign, which is exempt anyway.
I mean, okay.
Okay. Let me see if I can bring this to, to a vote here. On, on the district regulation, uh, seven point eight. Um, so we had an amendment that take out, take out the forty up here. Um, and we had an idea that, and we also, we we're now on B twelve, there was disagreement about that. I think we probably should take a vote, Mr. Chairman, on six versus twelve for the home occupation signs.
I, I'd rather just do the whole, amend the whole thing, if you're.
Take a vote on the whole thing at the end?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, well, can I get a straw poll at least, Matt, you wanna, you wanna say something?
Um, no, oh, I'm sorry, I still have my hand raised, uh, no, I, I was, um, I'm good. Let's, uh, we got it, we got it, we do have to take out the, uh, RM district up there, don't we?
Okay. All right.
Do we still? No, didn't we just, uh, didn't we just remove RM at our?
You got rid of BM.
BM.
Business multiple.
You wanna take out RM?
What's RM?
Where is it?
Is that right?
Hold on, I don't think.
Oh no, we do have RM still.
Yeah, we do, it's the BM we took out.
BM we took out.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask people one by one if they want this section in this A one B part here, in the third line, to say six or twelve. And I'm gonna put in whatever the majority wants.
Sounds good.
Okay, so just in the order on my screen, Dave Forrest.
Twelve.
Peg, Peg Byron.
Twelve.
Buck Donovan.
Twelve.
Matt Carlino.
I'll do twelve.
Okay, that makes it unanimous, I, I support twelve too, so we're all in favor of twelve, way to go, Gordon, you saved twelve. Oh, wait a minute, maybe, I, maybe I'm confused, that was later, okay, sorry. Um, all right, so on, uh, on construction signs, are we good the way it is?
Now, they're under a permit now, or are we gonna do it without a permit?
It's permit, I, I don't know if I really think that's necessary, but, I mean, I don't really wanna do that. I think that the construction companies generally do a pretty good job, and I don't know what, we have a very strong public interest in saying, nah, nah, you didn't put your architect on there, I mean, I don't, they're advert, they do it for their advertising. I don't, do we care, Gordon, if they don't put their architect?
No, but believe me, if an architect's involved, and it's a big job, his name will be on there, he won't be working for him.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it'll happen.
Yeah.
No, I'm saying permit or not permit.
Yeah.
Why, why do we need a permit to re, to require what they have an incentive to already to do anyway?
Because you still have setback requirements. And, uh, with that twelve square feet, you don't wanna right at the roadside, or just next to the sidewalk, it could block your vision. So I would think you would still need those setback requirements, but you know, what, whatever.
Given anyway.
Well, it's not necessarily, but you're into an enforcement issue if they don't follow it, but with a permit, they know ahead of time. That's all.
It, it, by making it a permit required, it also solves the First Amendment problem, too.
I would think so, you've done it for everybody else.
Now, the only thing is, we allow, we allow a six foot no, construction sign, right?
No.
No, we, it's currently twelve. Without a permit.
All right, so I'm sorry to sound, but, so again, I go with the history of this, Gordon explained the history. So I think it's, it's, it's getting confused with the everyday contractor.
Right.
Yeah, this.
Go, go ahead, you guys.
I was saying, it seems like it's getting, getting, uh, convoluted with the everyday contractor, where he puts up the little, he or she puts up the little uh, for, like a free speech sign, but it says their con, you know, says their construction name on it. I don't wanna hurt those. All this is supposed to be, from Gordon's history, is for big projects like the Eagle Mill, where they wanna put up a sign that lists the, the team involved. So how do we separate that? Right now, it doesn't seem like they're separated.
I agree, I don't think there's anything in the bylaw that I know of that protects the painting contractor who wants to put a little s- sign in the front lawn.
Well, what about the real estate signs, what's, what's protecting them? They're two by three.
To go look, I'd have to go, Gordon, you know?
Yes, sir, thank, thank you, um, yeah, the, their Realtor signs and all those, there was a section in, in the definitions at one time, I don't know what happened to it. Um, that, that, that put the, um, that put the, the real estate for sale, for rent, all that was there as allowed without a permit, by right, up to six square feet, if I remember it right. With, and maybe the problem is the terminology, I, what I'm talking about historically is a construction sign, like major job versus a contractor's sign, a single contractor's sign. Like, you know, somebody who just does whatever, uh, Morrison's Home Improvement, uh, Bartini Roofing, Fairview Roofing, those are contractor signs. Not a construction, maybe you wanna put construction project sign. Because now you're incorporating a project, rather than, I, I don't know if that even matters, maybe Jeremiah can help us with language on that.
Construction project signs.
But you need to differentiate between, you know, the project sign versus a contractor's individual sign, those I believe anyway, in our old definitions, I think they were in there, along with, uh, for sale, for rent, and real estate.
They mu, they must be along with that, they must be. Maybe that's all it is, construction project signs.
Well, I don't think I, that can be confused too much, but, you know, again, that, I, I'm big on definitions, everything enforcement is about definitions. And if you define the construction, you know, project sign, or the contractor's sign, somehow you pick it up in definitions.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Well, up above, it says contractor, so.
Well, that's why, you need, yes, it can identify the contractor architect, but that's when, that, well, then maybe you have to go back to the shall. But it, um, it, the thought originally was to make that that, uh, define the difference between, you know, the for rent, the contractor, the roofer versus the major project, and if you don't wanna major word in there, because it's hard to, I, you know, to decide what's major. Um, anyway, that, that was years ago, so I don't know how we can clarify it at this point in our time.
Maybe Jeremiah just took care of it by saying the, the shall, or I think Gordon, you said that, shall. And then you'll have to, then you'll have to list everybody on there, and the only time they'll do that is on a large project.
Yeah, sure, so go back to shall, I, I'm not against it, I, I just. Yeah, sure. So go back to shell. I, I'm not against it. I, I just, I want to make sure that we understand the difference between the construction project signs versus just the little contractor, or not little, but, you know, the single
Yeah.
roofing sign or whatever, painter. I, I don't want to do anything that stops that.
Peter, you gotta, Peter, you gotta change the header to construction project signs.
Okay, I think we need to add something about these, um, minor, minor contractor signs, because I don't don't think it anywhere. I'm looking through the bylaws you guys are talking, but somebody else could research it if you want.
I might violate some of you, but I would think that that would be back where we talk about rent for rent. You know, that kind of sign and real estate signs, just put, you know, single contractor sign, something like that, in that portion of it.
I'm looking it up now.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, I was gonna say, I, I like the idea of, um, differentiating. Um, when the park was done over or different times, um, the town park owned by the Congregational Church, there were signs of, uh, huge signs, not small signs, and um, I think it's a great idea to differentiate between the signs. However you would word it, not being good at this.
Maybe you want to put a single contractor.
Okay.
Just a thought. I don't know if that matters.
How about any contractor?
Yeah, sure.
Is that, is that getting the idea across that you guys were?
And that'd be without permit, right?
Yeah, I agree, without a permit.
There we go.
Well, that keeps it content neutral with all the political signs and other ones we're letting go without a permit.
Yeah.
Do we want to go the size of a large project?
No.
Okay.
Dave, did you want to say anything?
No. Uh, the only thing I was gonna, what, what, what if we just said anything larger than a six square feet would be by permit? That leaves all the small signs, all the contractor signs without a permit. And anything bigger, it had to get a permit.
I think that's what we said, and, but you said it in twelve words and I said it in two hundred.
There's the lawyer.
Oh, goodness.
Is this okay, you guys, or do you want to keep working on it?
That looks good. Straw poll, want to do a straw, we, we all good?
Yeah.
Good, good. Okay.
Administration and enforcement. Now, here, I don't thi, I don't think I've changed much. I'm sorry, I wish I remembered more of what I did two weeks ago, so I could. Let's review E. These are the places where the building commissioner can remove a sign without notice. And there was some ideas that the ACLU was alarmed that it interpreted the first thing that the sign could be dangerous because of the content on the sign, which I think is mildly ridiculous, but I tried to rephrase it so that that implication is harder to, to make. So really, it's material, electrical, or structural defects that allow for action. If it's, if it's unsafe because it's going to fall down or because it's going to short out passersby and electrocute people, then the commissioner has to take action. Okay, but I've deleted a bunch of stuff that they were a little alarmed at, and I wasn't sure really made any sense. Everybody okay with that? Jeremiah, you're looking troubled.
Um, I'm fine.
Okay. Um, impedes vehicular or pedestrian traffic or vehicle sightlines or otherwise creates a traffic hazard. Okay, I think that was non-controversial. Is attached to a government-owned pole, pylon, or fence or utility pole? So I, I can, I can, utility poles and government-owned poles. Um, and this would allow the building commissioner to tear down a sign that's been stapled to a utility pole. Do we want that? I do, but
I think so.
Yeah. I think, you know, the only place we would get in trouble is if the utility complained, and I think that's almost impossible. I mean, they just don't do that. They, they like, they don't like people putting staples in their poles as, as far as I know. Okay, four, um, is on town-owned land by excluding any political sign placed adjacent to the owner's real property and in accordance with the subchapter on the owner's side of any curb or sidewalk edge maintained by the town. Is that okay? I think we looked at this before, but I don't know if it's got everything in it that we've changed above. Everybody's looking good. Keep reading.
Lawyers and enforcement people think it's good? Yeah, he's, he's wavering.
Close enough.
Okay.
And, you know, I still notify people, but that's me.
Well, I'm trying to, Gordon, I'm trying to narrow the circumstances where you have to act immediately.
I, I get that, not a problem. And even unless it's an imminent danger, you still have certain rules to follow, but that's, that they will, I, I'm good. I, I don't want to go down that road right now.
All right.
But, I mean, just a quick one on this, I think not necessarily free speech, but this would, uh, you know, the going out of business signs.
Yeah.
This would allow immediate removal of those, correct?
Yeah, if they're on, if they meet, if you, if they meet the criteria.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, uh, then we get into F, which is non-emergency removal and repair. Uh, everything else requires notice. One of two ways in which the building commissioner gets to elect, and I don't know anything about this second thing down here, non, non-criminalization. The, apparently the ACLU does know about it because they pointed out that there's no express provision in this statute for an appeal. So I took out
There is, there is, uh, an appeal.
Okay, well, let's hold it, let's hold it for now.
Sure. You're talking about chapter forty, section twenty-one D, right on the ticket, it says where you appeal. You appeal it to court.
It goes to, it goes to the district court.
Yeah, that's right. It says it right on the ticket.
Okay, from there to where? That's not an appeal, that's an enforcement action. Uh, never, let, let's just hold off on appeals for now, okay? So we have two ways to enforce it. One is a notice of violation, and the other one is non-criminal disposition in which there's a statutory procedure. That is existing by, by law, I believe, in Lee.
Yep.
I don't think I'm changing anything.
No.
You're not.
Okay. Notices. Notices shall be mailed to the owners uh, if known, or to the property, the sign owner, if known, or the property owner, uh, commencing on the date of, and it currently says on receipt of the certified mail. Is that the right term? Or is, or is delivery the right term?
I think you have to look at the statute, go to MGL forty, and then it'll spell it out there as to whether it's, um, I think it's probably on notice, just the word notice, and that's been debated too, what that means.
This is not the, the forty twenty-one D thing, Gordon. This is the town's notice of violation under one above.
Right, but that, that's even been debated as to whether it's
Okay.
You know, I don't know, I, I take it from the attorney, whatever, whatever Jeremiah thinks.
If, if you mail Leave this alone. I don't know that it's wrong. Jeremiah?
If, if you mail something and it doesn't come back to you, then, uh, delivery is presumed, but is this what, how our bylaw currently reads, I guess, I mean?
It, it currently requires certified mail of a notice of violation.
Okay.
So the question is, when does the time period run? And how do we mark that? Mark it by delivery or by to receipt?
Um, it should be receipt.
Okay.
The, the other option, the other option is, in what we usually do, and under building code and zoning, the recommendation is generally to send it by certified and regular mail.
Yeah.
Because certified may get rejected and sent back, but almost never does regular mail get sent back.
But Gordon, 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 you don't have to sign for certified. It just
Okay.
The, the post office just makes, makes, uh, a document that you can pull up, that they delivered it.
Okay, no, that's, that's great. That's
So you're thinking certified return receipt?
Yes, that's what I'm thinking, exactly. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, now we get to now we get to appeals. Um, and I don't think that there's any, uh, anything really surprising here. They're just some clarifications. The, the, um, the last sentence is struck because I don't think it's really needed. If there's an appeal pending, this is what it is about. This is what they determined.
Okay.
Okay, let's go on penalties. Um, three hundred dollars is unaffected. Each, each day is a separate offense that's unaffected. The building commissioner acting as agent the board is supposed to impose, can force this section. I don't know what imposed means, but uh, we already had a provision above that said how, who's going to do the enforcement. So this would have been, if we kept this, it would be redundant and apparently possibly even wrong. Um, and then it, the non-criminal disposition thing, which apparently was an afterthought, I built into the text above in the enforcement section. I moved that up, as you saw earlier. I, it's up.
Yeah.
It's up here in, in two, okay?
No.
Whoops, sorry. All right, that's it. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn, return the gavel to you for whatever you want to do.
Okay, um, are there any further comments on this? Okay, I'd like to, uh, get a vote now to send this along to the select board to be placed on the, uh, the next town meeting warrant. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make the motion. Oh, wait, Matt's got his hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna follow up on the, uh, construction signs. We really don't have anything for just a contractor. The twelve feet was, twelve square feet was what we allowed without a permit for construction signs, and it doesn't really clarify in the definitions a single contractor or a large project. But I think what we did is by, I don't think many contractors put up twelve square feet signs for uh, when they're doing a roof or a painting job, or most of it's usually about six square feet. But what we did was by changing it to six feet, square feet, we brought it in line with the for sale signs. So, I don't know how everyone feels about that, because our old bylaw did allow the twelve square feet without a permit for construction signs. And that's all I could find in the definitions. There's nothing separating a large project with an advertising board or a, a contractor, a single contractor doing a project. So.
So does this look okay to you, Matt, the way we have it?
Well, I, I'm fine with it because the six square feet brings in the, um, it brings in line with the real estate signs or the, the for sale signs that are allowed without a permit. But it does, it does change it to say twelve square feet will not be allowed, you know, unless you get a permit. So if there are single contractors out there putting twelve square feet, technically they'll be in violation. Will we enforce any of it? Probably not, but I just wanted to mention it to you. And I'm good with everything.
It's allowed, but I, I don't think there's any obligation to put up a con, a, a construction project sign, is there? I mean, you can have a construction project without a construction project sign, I think.
Well, it, it does say in, in the, um, construction in seven point seven, it does say the same terms as what we're saying, that it has to list, it shall list, identify the contractor, the, it doesn't really just allow a single contractor sign. It's all wrapped up into this construction. We really don't have a, a separate protection for a single contractor, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, we do now.
What we do now with this, I guess.
At the bottom in three?
Yeah. Uh, that's what I'm saying. It does, but it does change it to, to not allow it twelve square feet, so I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Yeah.
Peg?
Yes, um, I may have missed this, and I apologize, and thank you, Peter, for doing everything, um, or writing this up. Um, article four, number four. Article four, number four.
Right.
Okay. Um, exception as provided about political signs. In the second sentence there, in the same zone, including color, lighting and location.
That's the first, the first sentence.
Okay, is that what we're saying? Could you explain that, or just talk about that for a moment, if you don't mind?
It's, well, this, this is because we're talking here about a new kind of sign standard. Political signs, we're saying that people can get, have some of these signs with a permit. People can have some of these signs without a permit. They can put them in their windows, but other than that, they're still subject to the existing limitations on such things as no roof signs, setback, uh, lighting. Uh, you know, we have areas in the town where light, lit signs are allowed from the outside. Um, other areas, I think, where they're not allowed to be lit. I don't know. Whatever the rules are for signs in your zone would continue to apply. That's what this sentence says.
Okay, so including color, I guess that's
Oh, there's a little weird thing that says no signs, maybe day glow, I think. All right. If you want, I don't, I don't care.
Well, no, I'm just curious, because, um, I don't know. I don't know, can we register, uh, I don't, color? I don't know. I'm, that's my question, Peter, that's all.
Yeah. That's, that's for Jeremiah, I think, if can we regulate color, Jeremiah? You're muted, sir.
Um, these are political signs?
Yes.
Well, any, on any signs, I mean, what we're saying is, if there's a rule about color in the zone,
We don't have any color.
Political sign, you got to follow whatever that rule is.
We have color regulations for signs?
I think, I think there's a day glow.
I think, I think that the attempt to do that failed, so we should probably take that out regardless of
Okay.
So we don't, just for content base, we tried to do that with, you know, we wanted to, uh, we wanted to have some control over, um, you know, the franchise stuff, and it didn't pass.
The logos or whatever, yeah. Thank you.
Hey, I've deleted color.
There we go.
Matt, Matt.
I was gonna say, you know, we are gonna have to send this off to general code, right, you guys? To have them, uh, compare it to our original sign bylaw, right? Shouldn't we have them review this?
To see if I've got all of the strikes and ads right, you mean, or?
Well, yeah, and see how it or see how it, uh, I don't, I don't think they'll ever get back to us. I, I, I think what they did for us, Matt, was a more like an audit.
Yeah.
And, um, we'll probably go through that audit in the future again. Well, I think, I, I think what they do is, again, they, um, they'll insert it into the, uh, general code, I believe. Anyways, maybe, maybe you can, maybe it's something to talk with, uh, Beth and Chris Braden about, but I think they, they would assist in any new laws we we, we pass.
I'd be happy to have them. I'd be happy to have them look at it if they could get back to us in time to get to, to not delay the project.
Yeah, I don't know if they, if, uh, it'll, um, if we have to have them review it prior to uh, approving, you know, voting for it, but I think we could use them to, well, I guess if there's miss, if there's spelling changes or anything like that, but anyways, maybe we can, I don't know how that process would work out. I guess you'd have to check with Chris Britton on that.
Could that be part of our motion tonight? Send it to both?
I don't want to, I don't want to mess anything up, so maybe, maybe we should just, you know, move this forward, but check, check on the general code thing uh, at the same time after, you know, just to see if it's worth it. Might not be worth it.
How about if we do the formal vote for the selectmen, but ask to contact them and see if they could offer a service to us? And what I lost, if we have the money.
Yeah, I think that'll be, that'll happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I think I moved it, but I don't know if you got a second, did you?
Looking for, okay, hearing a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, move this along to the selectmen to be placed on the warrant. Uh, roll call vote. Matt Carlini?
Hi.
Dave Forrest?
Hi.
Peg Byron?
Um, I may abstain because of the political signs. I just want to hear what people say at the baby town meeting, that's all. I mean, I'm for everything else. Um, the political signs do, um, I am concerned about the political signs and.
So that'd be a no?
Um, I'm, no, it's an abstention, though.
Okay.
Any, can you abstain? Can you abstain? Is there a conflict or something or? Can you abstain? Is it legal to abstain? I'm just, I mean, I don't know why you abstain. Either vote yes or no. That's, you know, you're either for, you're either for it or you're not.
Well, I.
I said she can abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
Peter?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. This will be moved on to the select board and Beth, could you get it over to code three sixty and have them take a look at it?
I'll, I'll email out a copy of what I did tonight right now.
Okay.
All of you.
Thank you. Okay. I now close the public hearing on the sign bylaws. Any other formalities, Gordon, I gotta say?
Not that I can think of. That's what you want to do. I don't know that you have to do a roll call to, to end it, but Jeremiah could let us know.
Um, you're done, I guess. This is it. So.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're adjourned.
Jeremiah, thank you for your help.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for all the work. Thank you for revamping this through this process.
It's the sausage factory here. It's like making sausage. You don't want to see how it's done, but it's got to get done. We have a few sign permits, everyone, if we could get to that.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna spit y'all good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremiah. Thanks, Jeremiah.
Buck, I have a question. Why are we doing, still doing sign permits? Didn't we delegate this?
We are doing them until, I believe it goes through the AG and comes back and is finalized.
Okay.
Yeah. I was hoping we were too.
Do they, do they actually finalize? I thought once we pass it at, uh, the meeting, it's, it's law.
Um, no, there's a time.
There is?
Yeah.
Wow. Yeah, okay.
No.
Is there a set time, Buck, or do we just wait on them?
What, Gordon, do you know? Is it sixty days?
Well, they're, they're supposed, they're supposed to definitely get back to within ninety days and sometimes it, you know, you can make an assumption after a certain amount of time, but I just, I'd want to go back and double check. It's been a while since I've looked up zoning stuff like in that way.
Okay. All right, trying to. Someone's got feedback.
Yeah, it's been going on for a while.
It's been pegged before. Peg, can you move, could you mute?
Pardon me?
We're getting some buzzing in, in, in the past.
No, I don't think it's me this time.
Mute, Peg mute and let's see.
Still on. Then we still got feedback.
Just mute for a second and let's see if it takes care of it. Yeah, that, that works. It's gone.
Okay, we'll put up, we'll, we'll deal with it, Peg, so you can talk, please. But we just wanted to solve the mystery, okay? Um, I don't know what happened here, folks. I'm trying to get to this.
It's the one eleven Pleasant Street, second one down.
Yeah.
But there was a narrative in the agenda, on the agenda that tells you the dimension and stuff.
That's all it is. All right, I guess look at your agenda. Uh, this is for the Carlson Building.
Buck, do you want to share your screen or is it, can, are you able to or not?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get there. I just trying to go through permit eyes and it didn't work.
Yeah, yeah. Would it freeze up on you?
Now, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Um, if I could, but while you're trying to bring it up, um, hopefully everybody will, will look at the bylaw itself and the, and, and there, there's, you're gonna run into this every once in a while where, uh, originally when Carlson's was built, it was labeled as an I-zone, and then it got changed to a rural business zone, RB on that side all the way to Southley. The problem is that the original freestanding sign was allowed to be much larger than what's allowed now. And I believe that when you find the dimensioning on the application, and if you go to our sign by law, uh, one ninety-nine, seven point eight district regulations, part B, allowed signs and sizes for freestanding under C. You're gonna find that unfortunately, and this I think should be changed, um, is that the single business freestanding is not to exceed sixteen square feet and they're asking for almost forty-six square feet. You're gonna have more signage if you have multiple businesses within the building, but a single business in an RB is only allowed sixteen square foot as a freestanding, so now that I give you all the good news, I think I'm gonna go away. Um, I have a couple of things going on here, so I'm gonna have to quit the meeting, but I appreciate you listening to me so far and good luck with whatever you gotta do.
Okay. All right, how do we deal with this one?
Well, I mean, what's the current size of the sign? The, the one that Carlson has down there now? Do we know?
Forty-seven by seventy-one.
That's the current.
Is that what it is?
No.
Or is that what they're asking for?
I think he want to replace.
Yeah.
They want to keep the same size?
Yeah.
So this is like what we run into, um, in a way with the hotel on.
Yep.
Who's the tonic street? And this is what, the problem we run into is when these businesses change, the, the idea of our, our sign bylaws is to bring them into what we want.
Yep, into accordance.
Into accordance, and now with the Husatonic, uh, multi hotel or, I don't know if that's, if you guys think that's different or?
Well, didn't we, didn't we change the rules so that if they just repaint or do minor repairs that they don't have to conform to the current bylaw? So is this repainting? I mean, are they just taking out one panel and putting in the new owner's panel?
Well, yeah, they're making them, it's a brand new, it's, it's gonna be a new sign, maybe the same size, same everything, but all different.
All different wording.
All different wording.
Right, but I, I think that's okay. I mean, I think they could do that as long as they aren't making the structure bigger. Or, or doing a repair that requires a thirty-five percent replacement cost, right?
Well, we gotta go under non-conforming sign then, right? Don't we?
Yeah.
Seven point.
Seven five.
We can't go by our new bylaws because that we haven't heard back from the AG yet.
Okay. I mean, maybe we should, maybe we should postpone this until we get that validated.
Uh, how about existing non-conform? Uh, I, it's as I say, I remember we did talk about this place on who's the tonic street. And I thought that because they were not changing the structure of the sign, the supports, uh, anything but the panels, uh, that we let it go this time. But we also put a covenant to it that if it comes back again, they're gonna have to bring it into compliance.
I mean, just read seven point five A. That's where we're at, right, guys?
Yep, yep.
So.
I mean, it's reworded, redesigned and altered.
And really, and really the same as, but, but the Husatonic, that was my argument. I don't like this, um, by law, it, it doesn't give us much discretion, but we allowed it on the sunset.
Right, but they, they were not, it wasn't a full business change.
That's true. Good point. But this one's a full business change. What makes it even harder, harder to allow?
If we, if we waited on this until the, the AG approved our recent changes, wouldn't we be able to approve this?
I don't know if we would. Do we, can we, can we get that? Can we pull up our approved? Uh, does anyone have that at hand?
I can, I can do it. I think I can do it.
Cause I, I would be good if, if we could under the new.
Take me a minute. I'm gonna share a screen, Buck, okay?
Yep.
You see it?
Sure.
Yeah, I think it, I think it allows us to actually.
I mean, I, I think if he's tearing out the foundation and putting in a whole new structure, this doesn't, this doesn't tol- tolerate that, but if he's just taking the panel off and putting a new panel up and leaving the structure alone, that's like repainting, rewording.
Exactly how we, exactly how we intended it, right?
Yes.
Yes, um, I, I'm wondering, could we send him a notification that, um, his current application, we must decline to endorse?
No, I think we should approve it under our, our pending bylaw.
We, we don't have this bylaw yet.
Oh, I mean.
Nobody's gonna object to this.
Okay, I wouldn't. I, I'm, I'm okay taking a chance of doing it.
All right.
Because that's our good intention. Um.
Okay.
If, if everyone agrees that this paragraph allows us to do it.
Well, I, I don't know. Do we know that there's no, uh, significant restructuring of the sign?
I was gonna say, we need to confirm that for sure.
Why don't we, why don't we postpone this? I don't know how, if they need it right away, maybe they do, maybe they don't. Uh, I mean, if we postponed it and asked for clarification of whether the repair or restoration exceeds the thirty-five percent standard, by the next time we meet, we may have our new bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, I definitely would let, if we're gonna approve this, I definitely would want to confirm either through the application or through response from the applicant. How much are they restoring? If they can give us a breakdown of how much of restoration?
Well, well, here's, here's the thing. In their application.
Yep.
Uh, it says material is used to construct the frame. It's NA because they're using existing.
Okay.
So they are just, they're just changing the, the face is all they're doing.
Hey, hey, Buck.
Beth, yeah.
Um, I just want to let you know too, this has already been delayed because of the problem with the meeting not getting posted last meeting. It was on that agenda, but we couldn't hold the meeting, so they've already waited. This is week four.
You wanna make the motion, Matt?
Uh, I don't have the detail, uh, Buck, can you put the applicant up there so I can read the, uh, information? Or, I mean, I can pull up, or Peter, can you?
I got it. Yeah, okay, okay.
Sorry. All right, uh, there, I got, I got it. Oh, there it is. Okay. Uh, I'll motion, uh, to approve. Um.
Endorse.
I'll motion, I'll motion to endorse, uh, the new sign. Uh, where we are.
Yeah. I know, it's, it's, that's the owner's name. That's the sign company.
Go up top there, Buck. There was a continuation after Hanny. Here it is. Um, I'll motion to endorse the new sign to be, uh, that's going to be installed at eleven hundred Pleasant Street for Armor Fire Technologies.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Should we do, should we add, uh, per our bylaw that's, should we add anything?
Pending bylaw? I, I think we're okay.
I think we are too. I, I'm.
Okay, I'll go around the room. Peter?
Aye.
Dave? He's gone.
He's off doing.
Dave Forrest, uh, Matt?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Signs endorsed.
Dave, Dave can vote now.
Oh, Dave?
Yes.
You're gonna endorse this sign? That car?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Gordon, Gordon, I don't think's gonna like that.
Nope.
Well, he doesn't like anything happening down by his yard, you know?
What doesn't he like?
He's like anything happening anywhere near his property.
True. Okay, this one is Sullivan Station. Signs already up.
We're at DC, are we in DC VC there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
They're just replacing the name.
Yeah.
Of the old business with the new business, right?
Yes.
Right.
Saying, and they're not really putting it up on the roof the way it's presented.
That's, yeah.
This could be the sloppiest sign application I've ever seen. I move approval.
I'll second it.
Or endorsement. I'm sorry, endorsement.
With a reminder that it's not to be on the roof? As.
And we're not approving a roof sign.
Not approving a roof sign. Gordon will see this and, and string us all up, I tell you. Uh, Peter?
Aye.
Motioned, and I think Matt second, correct?
Uh, no, Peg, Peg second.
Peg second, okay. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Peg? Peg? Peg, you're muted?
Yes, I would bow down. Thank you.
Okay, Buck Donovan, aye. This might be our last batch of sign permits, folks.
Yay.
I move approval of the minutes, the draft minutes of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Oh.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We'll just do a verbal on this, aye?
Aye.
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 Anything else?
Uh, are we going back to?
Ah, yes. I guess, uh, Chris Britton would, is encouraging us to go back to a live meeting. Anyone have a disagreement?
Oh, I love Zoom.
I do too. I do for multiple reasons.
Is it our discretion to do it either way?
Uh, Beth?
So we have an extension through July fifteenth. Right now before we have to go back in person. Um, we did, if you come by the town hall, there is a seventy-inch. Flat screen TV that we've installed in the courtroom. It has a remote controlled camera on it. We're waiting on some audio equipment that would sit at the table, so the meetings would still record. They're still gonna go on CTSB. Um, and people could actually still remote in, but you'd need to have a quorum in person. Um, but we don't have the audio equipment yet anyway, so you don't have to make a definite decision, but. Zooms, we have until July fifteenth to really make a decision.
I'm in favor of waiting to the audio gets, gets set up.
Me too.
Yeah. Um, Beth is. How's the legality of voting gonna go? If we have a quorum in there, if members are on Zoom, are they gonna be able to vote?
Yes.
Okay. That's good to know.
So are you saying some of, uh, the members don't have to come to the meeting?
Correct.
Yes.
Wow, we have to, but we need to have three present in the courtroom, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
That would be like the, so it is now that they're. People were complaining that like the select board was not allowing people from the public. To come to the meetings when, like if they're out of town and the only way they could do it is, is, you know, hybrid. So we have to now offer a hybrid option for people that wouldn't be able to make it in person.
Wow. We just get better and better, don't we?
Yeah.
There's no excuse to miss a meeting, I guess.
No, pretty much. What's everyone think? Are we gonna stay with this or we going back in person?
I like this. It's like, my daughter came down with COVID yesterday and I have. Friend in Pittsburgh down with it last week, and the case loads are going up and I just assume wait.
Okay, Dave, your thoughts? Same?
I agree. I think we should wait.
Okay, Peg?
Uh, it's fine with me, whatever people want. It's fine.
Okay, um, and Matt, you voiced your concerns.
Yeah, I'm good, but I do, I do think it's gives us a good like, like Peter's situation. You know, if we were doing in person, he could stay, stay home for safety reasons. I think that's good.
Yeah, I, Beth, I think we're gonna wait till the technology is in place in town hall. And then, uh, then we will be going back to a, a, a live meeting. With, you know, and then it's gonna give people the option, you know? Like I said, the, the six o'clock meetings I can make. Some boards I'm on, they have four o'clock meetings and Zoom works great. So.
I bet you a lot of people, uh. That are watching the meeting, don't come to the meeting, they, they just hybrid in.
We don't see much of anything happening. We had two. We had Gordon and two more. Tonight, so.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, Peg, you had something?
No, I was gonna say in the wintertime, I think it's, I mean, I'm fine if, you know, whatever we decide, but in the wintertime, my goodness, I think it's wonderful. To be able to do it. Um, but again, if somebody has health reasons, I certainly support going to, um. Whatever you want to do is fine with me.
It's too bad, it's too bad you can't just have the chair have to go in in the wintertime.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Yeah.
Well, you know, whoever the, whoever is the chair, you know? Too bad we have to have three there.
That's state rules.
I think it is, too.
No, I'm saying too bad, too bad you can't, because we're all, if we're all on the meeting, we're all on the meeting. I mean, too bad you have to have three in person and can't just have one. And then the other four can, uh. Stay on Zoom.
Okay. I guess we got one more motion to take care of?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone's work.
Yeah, thank you.
We got through that and it'll be on next town meeting.
Good work, you guys.
Good work. Uh, you, Peter, thank you.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Good night, folks.
Good night.
Good night.